Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Tuesday, October 1st, 2019 Board of Selectmen's meeting. I'll read the agenda. Seven o'clock, we're going to have citizens' input. Seven oh five, we're going to have a presentation about the Green Community. Seven thirty-five, application for change of manager. Seven fifty, we have a public hearing. SV Patriots Place, Splitsville. Eight oh five, we have another presentation about the plastic bags here in Foxborough. Eight twenty, application for change of officer, officers. Eight thirty-five, special town meeting warrant. Eight fifty, we'll talk about the police chief contract. Nine o'clock, selectmen's update. Nine oh five, town manager's update. Nine ten, assistant town manager's update. And we've got a bunch of action items tonight. So Amanda, last time, do a pledge allegiance for us, please.
Absolutely.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Before we open it up for citizens' input, I do have to apologize from the board about the meeting last night. We did have an executive closed meeting. We were going to open up the meeting afterwards, but the closed meeting ran a heck of a lot longer than we expected, over an hour and a half by the time we did get out. The Conservation Committee was already meeting in here. I did come out. We did post citizens' input. I came out, checked to make sure that there was no one here for citizens' input, and we closed our meeting last night. So those of you that were waiting for us to come back into open session, we never did. Having said that, we apologize. The board definitely apologizes.
Except to adjourn. You'd actually get adjourned.
We did adjourn officially, yes, that's right. After I made sure that there was no one for citizens' input. We'll open up for citizens' input here tonight, this morning. Mr. Athalat, come on up.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. It's important that I stress that we're here as private citizens. This is speaking on behalf of a citizens' effort going on in town right now. It was formed just a few days ago when the Historical Commission ended its meeting last Monday night. It was with a sense of despair that the Commission had exercised all of its privileges in trying to work out alternatives to demolition of the Amos Morris House, and they had no more avenues left. And it was the next day that the idea was conceived that we should make a direct appeal to Robert Kraft in an attempt to forestall the fact that the Kraft Group had in its possession its demolition permit. It could start the bulldozers anytime. And this was breathing down our necks. So we started this effort with a quick note to Mr. Kraft for the benefit of everybody. May I read that just quickly?
Sure.
Dear Mr. Kraft, there was great cause for celebration when you purchased the Amos Morris House and made a solemn commitment to restore that treasured link to those who had helped establish the community of Foxborough and its early industries. Plans change, time passes, and neglect accelerates deterioration. The Foxborough Historical Commission has countless meetings with Kraft staff members to discuss restoration, but sadly, decay has continued. The Kraft Group pressed forward for a demolition permit. The Historical Commission exhausted all attempts at resolution, but meetings lost their vision, and time is fast running out. We appreciate all you've done for this community, but you and you alone control the fate of this treasured link to our past. We encourage you to honor your original commitment. So we are right now gathering signatures, and their sign-up sheets are available at Foxborough Cable, at the Post Office, at the Maryland Rodman Performing Arts Center at the Orpheum, and we hope, when we leave here tonight, that we could also say people could sign up here in the lobby at Town Hall. But if I could, you just have to understand that, yes, a lot played out in the news recently about the demolition permit and how we had to declare the house historically significant to get time to work out options of something other than demolition. The Historical Commission has been involved with this issue for more than 20 years. Now, we could be here every night for a week and a half explaining different things that the Historical Commission has done. We started out informally. Members would just work with the security officer up there, and he would get some things done to the property. Then Mike Titus of Maintenance got involved. They would be responsive, and this is all volunteer. We had no authority, Commission did, but things got done. We don't have any idea how much management knew about that. But the deterioration continued. But finally, they had a formal grounds, a building and grounds committee come on the site. And, I mean, here they are, new to the issue. They see this monstrosity of an old building to them. I think their sense of job dictated to them, they should try to get this problem off the boss's back. There was a sense there that they were not aware of the full background of everything. So we wrote a letter to Mr. Kraft. He drove by, did not like what he saw, immediately orders to straighten up the yard and so forth. He started asking questions, demanding answers, met with a restoration expert that we had recommended, and we thought we were well on track to something that would lead to restoration. And we have had more meetings than you could count with different representatives of that group. And restoration was the subject of every one of those meetings. But we got back on track, but then some problems arose, differences on other matters between the Kraft and the town. They promised us they would be discussed at the meeting, but so many other things were coming into play, like traffic, parking, then NFL lockout, Myra's illness, and so on. So we had to, in a sense, kind of start all over again. And met many, many times with Don Krantz and his people. Two of the Commission members would meet, and they would have me there for historical background and just outside of the picture. An unbelievable effort by the Historical Commission. They produced the most complete booklet about that house. Everything that's ever happened to it since it was built in 1803. A hundred and seventy years of family ownership, and then all the owners, all it meant to the community, and detailed every single thing that the Commission had done. And we submit that, and we hear nothing back. We just have to wonder how many people read it. But one of the prevailing suggestions we had, if in fact, yes, Mr. Kraft was going to restore that when he bought it, he stated he would restore it and use it for hosting visiting dignitaries, owners of other teams, et cetera. And it didn't work out that way. So we understand. Plans change. But there had to be, in our hope, a positive ending to this. And we thought there was a way that they could end this problem of them not wanting anyone else on that property that was going to be continually making complaints about the Patriots Organization. If we could get that house restored and have somebody in there, for example, a charity that they could turn that property over to on the condition that they would accept neighborhood interference once in a while. But we just kept pushing things like this on and on and on and on. But other things, just many times, we would be on the agenda for the Kraft Group meeting, and time and time again, there were so many other pressing issues, they never get to the Amos Morris House. We went over this, over this, time and time again. Could it be stored, dismantled and stored? Where could we move it to? How could we move it? Would there be any restoration money? The last meeting we had with the Kraft Group lasted seven minutes. And the only thing that they were stressing was their intent was a vacant piece of land, but nothing on it. Now, that left us in predicament. And they finally filed the, as I said, they had filed the demolition permit already after that meeting. They asked to have it issued so that they were then free to roll the bulldozers at any time they wanted to. This was just a very, very, very difficult position for the Commission that had, on the part, their service to this community, had done so much over decades trying to save that house. And we had that last Commission meeting accepting the fact that our hands were coming empty. And all of a sudden came the idea of, well, there was one other special letter written to Mr. Kraft beyond any official town board. And that was one to recommend following the idea of turning it over to a charity, but to make that charity the Myra Kraft Charitable Foundation. They've given millions for his medical research. They've supported so many different charities. They made a whole list of awards just a couple of months ago. And if they had that charity in the house, it would be eligible for grants on the restoration. Now, that letter was hand-carried to the stadium with promises that Mr. Kraft would get to see it. That was August 9. I have tried everything to get some confirmation from somebody, anybody, that he actually saw that letter. Nothing. No response whatsoever. So here we were with the Commission at their last meeting, and I was there. No place to go. So that next morning came the idea of this citizens' group to collect signatures from a vast cross-section of the town and be able to go up here and say, "Mr. Kraft, you've got to listen." And I'll be very honest, I can't believe that he would have read that August 9 letter and not responded to it. So here we are, collecting signatures. And they are available, as we have been mentioning, at Cable, at the Post Office, at Rodman Center, and hopefully, Town Hall. But that's where we stand today. And we have been met with the greatest response you could imagine, as people realize what this citizens' group is up to. And this has not been discussed at any meeting of any board. It just came out of nowhere as the first thing we could think of that might give us some hope. But it is so important that we get an opportunity for one last hope that we could persuade Mr. Kraft to honor that first commitment that he made to restoration. And just as the Commission did such extensive work to develop any possible kind of alternative to demolition, they would certainly support that becoming the Myra Kraft Charity Group as well, or anything else we could help with. But that's where we stand today. And that's why we're here tonight, to bring you members on board. And I'm sorry, this evolved so quickly that we just have to come to citizens' input because we need those citizens, we need those signatures today, tomorrow. The sooner we can get up there, and we'll let them know tomorrow that this is very, very much under the way. And we've got to make it work. It's our only hope.
Thank you.
But I thank you so much for your presence and willingness to let us come here. And I'm sorry this got a little more involved than our usual citizens' inputs.
Thank you for your presentation. Thank you a lot, Jack. I'm glad it went out to everybody.
But would it be possible if we left some signature pads out in the lobby with a little note on it that explains what it is?
Can we leave a petition here at Town Hall, something like that?
That's actually a very good question, because it's a political thing.
Can we check with legal counsel and get back in touch with you?
There's nothing political about it.
Well, it is, but it's a special interest.
Just people have a chance to speak.
Well, I understand. Thank you.
I leave it in your capable hands.
Yep. We'll get back to you tomorrow.
We'll check on it and make sure.
Yep. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else for citizens' input? All right. Great, thank you. We'll make a presentation on the Green Community. Come on up and introduce yourself.
Certainly.
Yeah.
It's magic. Yeah. It'll come back up, it better. There we go. Good evening. My name's Joanne Becetta. I'm the Deputy Director of the Green Communities Division at the Department of Energy Resources. I was invited here by Ed Ferguson to give a 30,000-foot view of the Green Communities Program and answer any questions you folks may have about it. So a little bit about the Green Communities Division. We are a part of the Department of Energy Resources in the state. And our reason to exist is essentially to help cities and towns with anything that's energy-related. I'm going to talk mostly about the Green Communities Program, but we do have other resources and opportunities available to cities and towns. We have, we're just wrapping up an LED streetlight grant program. I'm not sure if Foxborough took advantage of that. We have technical assistance grants that are available to cities and towns to fund experts to, you know, if you want to redesign a heating system for something more efficient and you don't have an engineer on staff that can write specifications, you could hire an expert to do that. Those are called the Municipal Energy Technical Assistance Grants. And we also have a free online energy tracking and benchmarking tool called Mass Energy Insight that automatically downloads gas and utility data into a town account. So you can track how the energy is being used in your town facilities, and, you know, if you see a spike, it alerts you to, like, maybe see if something's going wrong, or if you do a project and you hope to see the energy going down. So Bill and I were reminiscing, when he was the town manager in Dedham, they were one of the first green communities almost 10 years ago. The Green Communities Program was established by the Green Communities Act of 2008, and it establishes the program, which I'm going to talk more about, but it sets aside up to $20 million a year for grants to cities and towns for energy projects. So since then, we've awarded over $100 million of grants. Cities and towns are realizing over $10 million of savings, cost savings per year, and we've closed out over 270 grants total throughout the state. And we save energy, as you could see in that slide. So if Foxborough decided to become a green community, it would receive a designation grant between $100,000 and $155,000. After the town spends that, you're then eligible to apply for competitive grants, which are right now are capped at $250,000. We currently have 240 green communities throughout the state. You can see this part of the state is a little more white than green, so we're working on that. We like to fill in some of the green as we go along. But it's, you know, it works well for small towns, big towns, medium-sized towns, rich towns, poor towns. You know, we have cities, rural towns. So it's something that if the town decides it wants to do, you can do it. A little bit about nearby communities, what they've received over the years. Easton was also in that inaugural group, and they received almost $1 million from us since then. All the other communities are more recent. And just want to highlight both Plainville and Stoughton. They spent down their initial grant and have received competitive grants as well. So it's not a one-and-done type of a program. A little bit about the process. We have regional staff located. We put them in the DEP office in Lakeville. They have an office and a phone, but they're going to meetings like this. The person who was doing this job left a few months ago, and a new person's going to start in a couple of weeks. But essentially, that person will work with staff, volunteers, or whoever to help meet the criteria and move the project forward. We have an annual designation application, and it's usually late fall, in late October often. So if this is something that the town was entertaining to do, you'd be in a good spot now to start planning and get everything set for next year. So as part of, to become a green community, there's designation criteria. This is established in the statute. There's five criteria. The first two have to do with as-of-date zoning and permitting. So what this would be is to set aside a zone within the community that promotes renewable or alternative energy. And it could be either generating facilities, such as solar farms, wind turbines, but I don't think Foxborough would be a good site for wind turbines. Research and development facilities, so if you have an industrial zone already that allows R&amp;D, if a R&amp;D facility that researches alternative or renewable energy, that would be allowed. Or manufacturing, the same type of thing. So you have three different ways you can meet it. You don't have to just do one. And with the expedited permitting, what that means for us is that hypothetically, if a battery researcher wanted a site here, the permit, the building permit or the occupancy permit would need to be issued within one year. So nobody has any trouble meeting that, because town processes generally allow for, you know, things happen within 90 days. The third criteria, I'm moving ahead. There we go. The third criteria, I call this the term paper. This is establishing an energy use baseline for all of the town buildings, including schools, vehicles, street and traffic lights if the town owns them, and if the town owns and operates any water or wastewater infrastructure, establish a baseline for that. And that's something you would use that Mass Energy Insight Tool for. And then coming up with a plan to reduce that energy use by 20% in five years. And this is something that we assist with by having folks come out and do audits and assessments of your facilities, come up with potential projects that can save energy. Here's a little more about that Mass Energy Insight Tool. It has a lot of very visual charts and graphs, so it makes it user-friendly to be able to identify trends in your energy use. The fourth criteria has to do with adopting a fuel-efficient vehicle policy. So this would be for any vehicles that are essentially passenger vehicles, up to regular pickup trucks, like Ford F-150s. It does not include fire trucks, ambulances, heavy-duty trucks. So what we find is most of a town's vehicle fleet is actually exempt from this. But it does have, you know, a policy that you would purchase, you know, fuel-efficient vehicles. And right now, it's established by MPG requirements, and they're not terribly onerous. So if you were, today, we're going to go out and purchase a regular passenger vehicle, it would need to have a miles-per-gallon, 29 miles-per-gallon or better. And as we all know, there's a lot of models out there. This does not require the fleet to be turned over into Priuses. And if you go down this fun little cartoon, pickup trucks, if a four-wheel pickup truck has to meet 16 miles-per-gallon right now. We're in the process of looking at updating these a little bit, because they were last updated a while ago. So they may uptick a couple of miles per gallon, but the idea is that there'd be multiple models of vehicles that would be available, so you wouldn't have to buy something different. But it's to sort of encourage communities to look at, you know, if they have a Ford Expedition, it's not going to meet this, but maybe they could get by with an Explorer, that sort of thing, and to change mindsets. The last criteria, what's written in italics is what's actually in the statute and the way that, and, you know, this is from the legislature, so we're like, well, how do we do this? So the best way to achieve this with new construction is for communities to adopt the stretch code, which is a local option of the state building code. And this has to be adopted by town meeting. The stretch code has been around for a while, and there's been a lot of, maybe not misconceptions. It was actually a stretch back in 2010. Now, the marginal difference between the base code and the stretch code isn't so much. So it basically, right now, only applies to new residential construction. So if you're renovating your kitchen or you're building a dish, it doesn't apply. And for commercial construction, it only applies to construction that's over 100,000 square feet, so, you know, large projects, not, you know, little strip malls and things like that. As of right now, we have 273 stretch code communities, and you probably can't see it, but when I showed you the map earlier, where there was a lot of white, some white in this part of the state, not too much green, we have some orange here. So we're currently working with Attleboro, Rahoboth, Norton, Norfolk. They've all passed the stretch code in the past year, and we anticipate them becoming green communities. So the building community in this part of the state is certainly becoming more and more informed and knowledgeable about what it entails. And that's it. Just wondering if you have any questions? I didn't want to get too much in the weeds unless you have certain questions. I will add that if this is something the town is interested in doing, I have a couple of tips to help facilitate it. It does require a bit of work. We have small grants that we give out to regional planning agencies, and I believe is MAPC, are you folks in MAPC? So they've got a pretty robust clean energy staff that work with cities and towns to help go through the energy audits and pull together the information. So if that's something the town was interested in doing, we can connect you with them and figure out a way to get that moving forward. It requires a local champion, so somebody needs to, you know, make sure that all the tasks are being made. It's quite possible you already meet many of these. Your zoning is probably fine. I haven't checked. But I suspect that a town of this size probably has a commercial industrial zone that allows R&amp;D, that sort of thing. that allows R and D, that sort of thing. And the things that the grants can be used for is essentially any kind of energy project at a municipally-owned facility. So obviously, Town Hall is brand-new, so you don't need to do anything here. But any, you know, any projects in senior center, fire stations, schools, things like that. Grants can also be, fund a vehicle. So if you wanted to, you know, check out an electric vehicle, I don't know if the town has any, or charging stations, that sort of thing. And it's a voluntary program. You know, we'd like you to join, but if you tell me to go away, I'll go away. But I'm happy to answer any questions right now.
Thank you, Joanne. Thank you, Ed, for.
Could I say a couple of words, too?
Sure. Come on up.
Want to?
Introduce yourself.
We can share, all right?
Sure, just a quick question.
Okay, thanks. Yeah, my name is Ed Ferguson. I really appreciate the opportunity to have Joanne come in. I called in a couple of months ago just asking some questions about the program. My primary interest is climate change. There's a lot happening in that area. The world is changing, you know, things are happening. We see it around us every day. So calling into Town Hall, it was great. I had a lot of support. Amanda provided lots, a lot of support. And actually, many of the, or at least some of the town departments, provided some feedback that Joanne has seen. So the response has been great, and I really appreciate it. Joanne covered the program. The underlying objective, as far as I see it, when this regulation was put into effect back in, or law was put into effect back in 2008, was to reduce fossil fuel use. Fossil fuels are what is generating greenhouse gases, which are causing the global warming and the climate crisis, the pending climate crisis. If we do nothing to reduce fossil fuel use in our energy use based on fossil fuels, the United Nations Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change, as reported by Climate Nexus, predicts that by the year 2181 years from now, there will be a 7-degree Fahrenheit increase in average global temperature. And our world will be quite different. This is what they predict. Sea level will rise almost 30 feet. Parts of the earth will become uninhabitable because of heat and humidity. Half of the plant and animal species face extinction. Agricultural yields fall, resulting in food insecurity. Diminished potable water results in water insecurity. Heat-related human deaths increase. Violent storms, drought, wildfires increase in frequency and intensity. Mass migrations of populations result in political instability. And trillions of dollars spent on infrastructure relocation and repair, and so on. The list goes on and on. This is the legacy that we would leave our children, our grandchildren, and great-grandchildren. But there is hope. We do have the ability and the technologies to minimize the effects of climate change. However, this depends on political will. The Green Communities Program is a path forward for our town to prepare for the future, not only by minimizing our contribution to climate change, but also by participating and benefiting from the opportunities change brings. Again, I would like to thank the board for this opportunity. And I'll also take questions as well, if anybody has any.
Yes, so as you know, through Amanda and myself, there was an email chain that went, and I know I forwarded it to Ed, and I think Ed forwarded it to you. I guess my big question after reading the email chain, coming from a lot of our department heads that, you know, we're well on our way in doing a lot of this green community, do you sort of give credit for past work that's been done? Like, we already have a solar field. We have two solar fields. You know, from our buildings manager, we've been told that a lot of our buildings are very efficient and green. So I guess that would be my first question.
Sure, so we, this is a good weed question. So this would address a couple of things. Through the Energy Reduction Plan with the buildings, we allow communities to go back two years to any projects that were done recently and claim credit for that. So if you've just done a big project, that's something you'd be able to claim for. We hear this a lot, that communities have invested in their buildings and facilities over time, and they're pretty efficient. So we work really hard with communities to identify potential other projects, things that could be done to, you know, the big things are done, but then there's little things that, if you do enough little things, will add up to that 20%. So we haven't yet not been able to get communities there. Sometimes it's a little bit of a stretch, but that's something. You know, particularly with new buildings, this is something I've seen a lot, is you have these buildings with sophisticated energy management systems that are all computerized. Somebody puts it on override and never puts it back. So then you have buildings that aren't operating the way they're designed to. That's something we see a lot. And then people will come in and rejigger everything, and the heat won't go on at 2:00 a.m., when it's not supposed to go on, and things like that. Related to your solar fields, that's something, right now, the way the as-of-right siting talks about, it'd have to be in a new zone, which is why I was pushing the research and development portion of it. We may, I'm not going to, I'm speculating, but we, because there's so many communities that now have large solar fields, we may be able to have that be acceptable as well. Because if you already built the solar field on your landfill or other, you know, large property, then, you know, that's demonstrating good stewardship. So that's something we can look at.
Well, so I know for a lot of the board, and I apologize to the board, you know, this is sort of new. You know, we're just introducing it, you know, to the community.
Right.
And to the board. But does the board have any questions at this point?
Do we know if we meet all five criteria already?
We don't. We don't meet all of them. We don't, we've never adopted the stretch code here. So that, and the reason it's never gotten to that point is because there's been no real advocacy to push in that direction. But there is a pushback as well because it is more costly to go in that direction. And then the building community has always pushed back on that issue. Having said that, I'm like, I've been an advocate of this program, and Joanne knows that. So I was, when we first did it in Deadham, we were like one of the first in the state to do it. But that situation there was significantly different than it is here. All of the buildings there were old. All of them needed to be updated. The systems were all old. And we actually were able to take advantage of a lot of the programs put through by the Green Communities Program. So we were, we had a lot to achieve, and we gained a lot by doing that. With due respect to the point you made earlier that we put all these new systems in place, and then nobody really manages them, that's not the case here either. We actually do manage them. Actually, very efficiently.
I didn't mean to intend that nobody manages them.
No, no, no. You clearly don't know that. But I'm just wanting to let you know that we actually do do that as well. So when we looked at this, I started scratching my head saying, geez, what is it that we can really gain by doing this? Because we're actually doing the right things. We're all doing the right things that Ed just talked about. It was to try and be good stewards of the, of the, of the community and of our buildings, of our solar fields, the whole bit. We're taking all the right steps already, without any kind of push from anyone in any, any direction. So I think, you know, what we look at is the 20% achieved. I think we'd be hard-pressed to achieve that because we're already there. And I think, so then, I mean, we're always free, always open to take free money. I mean, nobody would say no to that. But then again, I'm not sure how much we would actually gain by participating either. And in other words, you could, it could be a lot of effort for a little return at this point because we're already there.
Yeah, that's something for you folks to, you know, discuss amongst yourselves. But it is, you know, some, it's a voluntary program and free money with a little bit of work, yeah. So it's, you know, it's something, you know, you, the thing, you know, and I don't know what kind of local groups there are in town or whether, you know, it could be part of, like, a larger sustainability effort. I don't know if the town has anything like that going on, or there's environmental clubs at the high school. But sometimes we see them getting involved in working on school projects and monitoring energy use and things like that. So if, you know, you, I would like to encourage you to keep thinking about it. And, you know, you could start the process, you know, with the, I hear your concerns about, you know, identifying energy reduction measures. That's real. But I think, I also don't want you to not try either. And if you go down a certain path, and it's like, you know, we can't, we're really efficient, then, you know, great. Kudos to Foxborough.
Right, so what I would like to see, you know, person standing beside you, you mentioned earlier, an advocate. You know, let's get together, Ed, now that we've had the boards, had the presentation. And maybe, you know, you could, as an advocate, take a look at what maybe, from an outsider looking in, maybe talk to all the department heads and see where you think we might be able to participate in this program. Maybe it might be eye-opening to you, what a great job we've done already.
Right.
But.
I think, you know, my perspective is I think that when we look at the dollars and cents, it may make, it could make sense on its, on its own right. I think from the larger perspective that when we're looking toward the future and the issues of sustainability, which I think we're addressing, and the community at large with the issues related to climate change and some of the things that are coming to bear on our changing world, that this, this could be a, this could be something that would be a focal point for actually the community at large, where other people would be getting involved and helping and taking a look at this. I think that for me to get involved, it's, I'm perfectly willing to do that. I would hope there'd be somebody in-town, in-town government who would also be a partner in that.
Well, I think, you know, I certainly would help. Bill would certainly help any of the department heads. But I think, I think Foxborough, over the last bunch of years, has always been not focused on, but always with a thought in mind of trying to be as green a community. I know, you know, our Buildings Committee has done a great job in the schools already changing things over. And even, even with the new Borough School renovation, I know he's had a thought on that, too, so. But let's, let's do a little bit more research here in Foxborough to see, maybe we're missing something. Maybe we are.
Mr. Chairman, perhaps it might be helpful if you had, I don't know if there's some sort of like a Green Communities Audit, so to speak.
Oh, that's exactly what I was, that's a great way to put it.
So to see if there's, you know, a checklist of things that we can go through and check and see where we are with the overall program, if there are things that perhaps we've missed, and just simply because we're not aware of them.
What I think might be a good first step is for the town to sign up for that Mass Energy Insight. Because I think I looked at the account, because I could see them all, because that's what I do. And all the gas and electric data is there, but it's all in one giant account. It's not broken up by building. So it requires somebody to put in account numbers so the electric and the gas data will go to individual buildings. And that way, you can see what's the energy use intensity. That's what, that's a miles per gallon for the building. It's called energy use intensity. You could see what that is and how it compares with others in the state. And, you know, whether there's opportunities there. That's sort of, that's one of the first things I look at is, you know, what are the town buildings doing?
Tony must have that all broken down.
Yeah, I would think so. I think we probably have that right.
And, and if, you know, we would need a letter from either Bill or, a letter from the town authorizing people to access this. So it could be somebody from the school, somebody here.
Well, we have a central facilities operation that.
Facilities person, absolutely, would be involved. So, you know, it could be a number of different people. And that they could, you know, work on it together. And, you know, that way, you could, you get a good snapshot of where the town sits and vis-à-vis its energy use. And it gets weather normalized, too, so you can see, you know, it counts for weather. So a mild winter would balance it out a bit.
So that would be a good first step.
That'd be a good first step. So then, you know, if all your EUIs, energy use intensities are super low, done. You know, maybe, you know, you don't need to do this. But it's probably, not all of them are like that. I suspect a lot of them might be. But so, but that's, that's the first step. You don't know until you start measuring it. So even if you decide not to become a green community, just tracking this periodically is helpful so you can monitor how things are going.
Just, just a further point of information for you is that, you know, we redo the buildings. All the buildings, we've never gone through LEED certification because it's an expensive process to go through that.
Right.
But we've also, at the same time, developed all of our improvements with a Silver LEED certification process.
Right, so it's certifiable.
Certifiable, correct.
Yeah, a lot of, a lot of places do that.
So instead of going through the process, but we still meet those criteria, which is a pretty high, pretty high threshold. So, but yeah, I just, you know, that's something that certainly, if there are areas that we're missing that we should be taking a look at, information is always helpful. So to the extent that we can look at it, and then maybe, you know, help in putting us in a different place, that's fine.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Oh, sure.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
All right, we have a application for a change of manager. Kitchen Partners.
And I'm going to recuse myself and sit in the audience.
Okay.
Here at the table, work, come on?
Yeah, come on up, introduce yourself, where you're from. We know where you're from, but the audience might not.
Hello, my name is Steve Pessek, and I am the General Manager at Union Straw Restaurant, located just across the common from this location here at Town Hall. I am the General Manager, and I've been with the restaurant since kind of the real push to get it open back in October of last year. So I've been there pretty much 60 to 70 hours a week, every week since October, relative to that.
I think we can all attest to the fact that he's been there.
Yeah, I mean, if you've ever been there, and if I'm not there, some, I'm, I'm at the store getting something for there.
Every time I'm there, you're there.
Yeah, exactly. So I believe we're just getting the license transfer. Jen Meckler, Jennifer Meckler, who is one of the owners or partners and our executive chef, she's stepped away with the restaurant to handle some family business. And so within that, I, being the person on site, kind of wanted to, you know, have the license transfer and have my name on it. That way, the ABC and everyone else just kind of has everything checked out.
Any questions from the board?
Very straightforward.
No, it is straightforward. I looked at it, too. Entertainer motion?
Motion to approve Kitchen Partners LLC doing business as Union Straw, change of manager from Jennifer Meckler to Stephen Pessek.
Second. All those in favor? All those in favor? One abstain? Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
All right, good luck.
Now you've got something else to worry about.
Yeah, I guess so. It was always something that I was keeping an eye on no matter what.
That's right.
All right, we...
Thanks, Steve.
Thank you. We have a public hearing. It's the second one down.
The Board of Selectmen, acting as the local licensing authority pursuant to Mass General Law Chapter 138, will conduct a public hearing on Tuesday, October 1st, 2019, beginning at 7:50 PM in the Gala Meeting Room, Town Hall, 40 South Street, on the application of a transfer of stock, change of ownership, beneficial interest, and pledge of license inventory for an annual all-alcohol restaurant license, common vitular, and seven-day entertainment for S V Patriot Place LLC, doing business as Splitsville Patriot Place, 220 Patriot Place, manager Kevin O'Brien. All interested parties are welcome to attend.
Come on up, gentlemen. Good evening. Could you please introduce yourselves?
Brian Gosda from McDermott Quill T. Miller, on behalf of the licensee S V Patriot Place LLC.
Kevin O'Brien, the manager on record.
Paul Holian, one of the partners.
S V Patriot Place. Welcome.
So this is generally just an application for a change of beneficial interest, transfer of stock, as well as an accompanying pledge of license. We're simply seeking to approve the buyout and redistribution of the existing interests held in the licensee entity. It was formerly held by three groups of beneficial interest holders or holding companies, so two of them being Right Coast Hospitality Group and Howell USA LLC. They'll be buying out interests formerly held by another group of individuals and then redistributing the interests that will be held 50/50 between the two. No new interest holders, just kind of redistributing what was already there. As part of that, we're also seeking a pledge of the license to Cambridge Savings Bank as collateral to secure a loan that was taken out to finance this transaction. Other than that, no changes in terms of operation, entertainment, CV license, manager of record, everything else will be remaining the same.
Kevin, you've stayed on, you were before and you're staying on?
Yes.
Any questions from the board?
Nope.
No, pretty straightforward. This is a public hearing. Any, anyone from the public? Anyone? Okay, great. I'll accept a motion to close the public meeting.
Make a motion to close the public meeting.
Second. All those in favor?
All right. Motion to approve application for transfer of stock, change of ownership, beneficial interest, and pledge of license inventory for an annual all-alcohol restaurant license, common vitular, and seven-day entertainment license for S V Patriot Place LLC, doing business as Splitsville Patriot Place, located at 220 Patriot Place.
Second. All right, all those in favor?
All right.
Congratulations. Easy enough.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. All right, we went from behind to quite a bit ahead of schedule.
Thank you.
Want to take care of some action items? What do you think? Yeah. Because I don't think the gentleman who's doing the next proposal is here yet.
Action item 12-01. Officer Scott Dion has requested a tuition reimbursement for $1,849.50.
Is that the motion?
No. Motion to approve Officer Scott Dion's tuition reimbursement of $1,849.50.
Second. All those in favor?
12-02. Motion to approve Sergeant Ken Fitzgerald tuition reimbursement of $1,849.50.
Second. All those in favor?
Motion to approve Warmtown Brewery LLC, application for five one-day wine and malt licenses for 10/12/19, 10/13/19, 10/14/19, 10/19/19, and 10/20/2019.
Second. All those in favor?
Motion to approve Normandy Farms' request for extension of service hours on two one-day wine and malt licenses for a food truck festival on October 5th, 2019, and November 16th, 2019, to 6 PM.
Second. Any further?
Yeah, under discussion, I'm going to recuse myself.
Oh, okay. All right, all those in favor?
All right.
One recusal.
Motion to reappoint Jared Craig and Julie Filbert to the Foxborough Cultural Council for a three-year term to expire on 10/4/2022.
Second. All those in favor?
Motion to reappoint Barnett Over and Ken Weinfeld to the Economic Development Committee for a one-year term to expire on 10/4/2020.
Second. All those in favor?
Motion to accept a gift donation of $500 to the Veterans Services Department from an anonymous to the general gift fund.
Second. All those in favor?
Motion to accept gift donation of $500 to the Recreation Department from Edge Performance Systems LLC for the new booth playground.
Second. All those in favor?
Motion to accept a gift donation of $250 to the Recreation Department from the Stather family for the new booth playground.
Second. All those in favor?
Motion to accept gift donation of $3,000 in total to the Planning Department from Mr. Joseph Lynch, Bay Colony Group, Inc., and Mayfair Realty and Development Company for wayfinding and branding signs in Foxborough, from Mr. Joseph Lynch, Bay Colony Group, Inc., and Mayfair Realty and Development Company, Inc.
Second. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I've never seen us lump together donations like this. Usually they're individual. Is there any issue with that, or do we need to separate them where they were two separate donations?
It's like three separate donations.
Yeah. I've never seen...
I'm not sure it's wrong to do it this way, but I don't, I don't know that, you're correct, I have not seen it done lumped together, but I don't think, I don't know if there's anything wrong with doing it that way either. I don't think there's any significance in doing it this way.
Yeah, I don't, I mean, as long as there's no issue with it, it's great to get this underway. I just don't want there to be any kind of issue down the road.
Well, the key issue is that it's being publicly presented to the board, and the board is publicly accepting it.
Right, but we don't know who's donating what.
It's on public record in the gift donation receipt form. If anybody has any questions, they can refer.
Yeah, that's right, exactly.
Okay, thank you. All those in favor?
Motion to accept a gift donation of $100 to the Foxborough Cultural Council from fundraiser to the general gift fund.
Second. All those in favor?
Motion to accept donations to the Foxborough Employee Health and Wellness Fair as raffle items.
Second. All those in favor? All right. We'll do the minutes one at a time.
All right.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes for the meeting on Tuesday, September 10th, 2019.
Second. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I've got one question. I wasn't at the meeting. I did watch it, and I just want to make a comment on each note. Under Assistant Town Manager update, after the 1, 2, 3, 4 bullet points that Mike talked about, it says, "Mike Johns said the town is regularly working too," and then it just ends.
Cut off in the PDF. I'll fix that.
Okay. Other than that, flawless.
As amended then?
As amended, the minutes from the meeting on September 10th, 2019.
All those in favor?
All right. To approve the meeting minutes of September 12th, 2019.
Second. Any further discussion? Was, I was out of that one, and I think Leah was out of that one. Yeah, we accused ourselves on this one. Minus myself and Leah.
Second. All in favor?
All right.
And accept the meeting minutes of September 17th, 2019.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
All right.
Great.
Mr. Chairman, just a, if I, just a point of interest for you all is that with Amanda leaving so shortly, we had a conversation internally about the issue of minutes, and, you know, we started thinking about it, well, you know, why do we really need to do minutes if the meetings are all televised? And it was a question I posed to legal counsel, because, you know, unfortunately, the state says the state open meeting law requirements is that you have to have written minutes and they have to be approved. So I posed this question, I didn't stop there because I still think it's silly if that's the case, because what's better than a record of a meeting that you can see everything that's said and everybody, you know, everybody being presented. The only thing that you have to do is attach the actual minute, any materials that were presented to the board. You have to attach that to the record. So I posed the same question to the Director of the MMA. He said, "That's a very interesting question." He said, "I don't know if I've ever been asked that question." And he said, "You know, it's something that we really should look into because it really is a significant time drain just about in every single community, city and community in Massachusetts. There's a lot of time and effort that goes into that. And quite honestly, why does the board have to approve something that's already been televised?" So you would have to do it for executive session, that's a different issue. But the minutes, and if you needed something that was a full record, you could actually transcribe the minutes from a film if you had to. I mean, because everybody's visible, you can see what's being said. So they are going to look at that. They're going to explore that option. I mean, it may take some time because they'll have to go through the legislature to fix that. But it's something worth looking at because it actually could save cities and towns a lot of money for doing that.
Sure.
Especially when virtually everybody televises their meetings now. You wouldn't have to do it for every meeting, certainly, but not every meeting gets televised, as we know. But certainly, think about the school committee meetings, think about, you know, perhaps some of the other committees that in town, and by the way, it might incentivize other committees to actually televise because they don't, may not have people to take their minutes. So it's another way of providing a solid record of what actually goes on.
Great point. I know we discussed it last week. You were going to bring it to the MMA.
Right, which I did.
Right. So that means Amanda has to stay until that's resolved.
Exactly.
What, four or five years, right?
That's right, exactly.
All right, 8:05, plastic bag ban.
Mr. Chairman, your colleague from Mansfield is here, Selectman Neil Ryan, but who is actually here in the, in the role of Director of the Beautify Massachusetts, right? Keep Massachusetts Beautiful.
Come on up and sit right up here, introduce yourself.
Hi, yep, I am Neil Ryan. I'm a neighbor up the street in Mansfield, a member of the Mansfield Select Board. I want to start by saying I'm impressed how many people want to give money to the town of Foxborough. I don't think we've had one motion like that. So whatever you're doing, that's good work. And I'm also the founder of Keep Mansfield Beautiful, like 12 years ago, which led to the formation of Keep Massachusetts Beautiful five years ago. So we're all about cleaning up and greening up the state, one town at a time, so. And I presented to this board a few years ago.
You did.
Concerning trying to get Keep Foxborough Beautiful off the ground, but we're still having to crack the Foxborough.
But we still do a cleanup though in the spring. We do a real cleanup.
Yeah, I know, I'm aware of that.
And it's actually pretty successful.
Unfortunately, once a year doesn't do the trick.
No, that's right. I think that's true.
Or to it, but anyway. So did you have questions from me, or how do you want to...
So coincidentally, a couple of months ago now, a seventh grader?
About six months ago.
Yeah, now ninth grader, yeah.
No.
It's been a while. She's now in the high school.
Wrote us a letter about doing something similar in Foxborough, what you guys did in Mansfield, in banning plastic bags.
Right, right.
And when we brought it up to Mr. Keegan, Bill, he said that you had done it. In Mansfield, maybe you can come and give us a little presentation on how you did it, what needs to be done. We have no idea.
And there's another woman, so it's more than one citizen. There's another woman who sent us a couple of emails as well.
Sure. I'll preface it by saying I personally did not do it in Mansfield. There was actually a citizens petition at town meeting from a group called Team Up Mansfield. I went to some of their meetings and advised them and so forth and supported them, but it was not my initiative, although I obviously support it. So that was, I guess, about a year and a half ago, and last I checked, everyone in Mansfield's still buying groceries and surviving. There are now 122, I believe is the most accurate number, towns and cities in the state that have passed, and we don't call them bag bans, bag ordinances, because it's not like we're banning all bags. So I think that represents around 40, between 40 and 50% of the population of the state. As you know, you may or may not know, you know, Boston has now passed it, Cambridge, so once those big cities get on board, that's really kind of changing it, and you get the domino effect. And just within this area, the towns that have passed besides Mansfield are Attleboro, Canton, Dedham is pending, I think, town meeting, Franklin, North Attleboro, Plainville, Sharon, and Rentham. And Franklin is pending as well. So, you know, you wouldn't be the only ones in the area to do it. There, I will direct you, as far as if you want to get educated on this topic, massgreen.org is a website that has been put together by people across the state, just volunteers, so that, for sharing information and not reinventing the wheel essentially, you know, so, you know, because, so you can go there and you can learn, you can, you can download citizens petitions, you know, bylaws. Different towns have done it differently. I brought a copy of the Mansfield one, which I'll happy to leave with you if you want to see what our exact motion was. You know, the issue obviously is the plastic pollution is everywhere, and the bags are one of the most common things that we find during cleanups, one of the most common things that make their way into waterways, they're clogging the storm drains. And then when they break down, you know, you've got the microplastics that the fish are eating, and we're eating the fish, so we're probably all eating a good, good amount of plastic, especially if you do the all-you-can-eat buffet across the street there at the Asian place. So one of the, one of the issues is, that comes up is this debate of paper versus plastic, and it gets kind of technical. And even within the environmental world, there are some people who say, you know what, you know, if you incentivize switching to paper, well, what about paper and all the downsides of paper, and the carbon emissions are higher and so forth. And I don't, I'm not going to get into the weeds and all that, but I'll make just a few points in favor of banning plastic, in favor of paper. And the main thing is that the paper is biodegradable. You know, if it gets littered or ends up in the ocean, it's not going to be there for 100,000 years, whatever the heck a bag is going to be there for. Paper does require more water, there are more, there are carbon emissions in the production of paper, but in the big picture, it's a very, you know, it's a very small percentage of what, you know, the US as a whole or Massachusetts as a whole is emitting. So to me, it's that the big issue is that, that the ability to decompose and the fact that the plastic will not decompose. Some stats here, in the US, we produce and use over 100 billion bags a year, which is crazy. I mean, I don't know if you have experience with this yourself, you go to buy a pack of gum and they put it in a plastic bag. You buy a greeting card, yeah, and you go to the supermarket... And you go to the supermarket, and I bring my reusable bags, but they're like, "Do you want your meat in plastic?" I'm like, "It's already wrapped in styrofoam and plastic. I don't need more plastic." But that's, that's my own pet peeves. The Ocean Conservancy does the annual international coastal cleanup, which in this state goes by the name of Coast Sweep. And bags are the third most common form of litter that they pick up after cigarette butts and plastic bottle tops. So they are out there, we've all seen them blowing from the trees and along the highways, which is usually not a very, you know, pleasing sight. Just going to open my notes here. You know, there's these, they call them life cycle analysis studies where you get into the people, the wonky people get into the real details of which one's better or worse. And those, a lot of it is based on a study that was done in two thousand nine in Britain. And they did not take into the fact, you know, the impact of the fact that much of the plastic bags are made out of natural gas and the fact that that has to be fracked. And there's an environmental impact to that as well, a negative impact to that. So when you add it all up, you know, I believe, as do many others who have supported these ordinances, that paper is preferable to plastic. And then ideally, what's really the answer is the reusable bags. You know, if people can just get into that habit, and probably have all done that where you mean to do it and you leave them in the car and you you get to the supermarket, you get inside the supermarket, you say, "Oh, no." But even a lot of the supermarkets are now just voluntarily getting rid of plastic. The Hanaford, or Big Y, excuse me, in Easton, they just said, "We're not, you know, they didn't wait for a bylaw, they just said for the whole chain, we're not going to give the plastic bags out anymore." And, you know, when it passed in Mansfield, we have our, you know, face, town Facebook page, like every town where people like to sound off. And, you know.
We don't have one of those.
You don't have that? People just, they don't sound off and they just donate to the town.
Tons of money.
This is a great town. I'm going to move. But, you know, you saw a lot of people say, "Oh, my God, you know, how am I going to, I'm not going to shop in Mansfield anymore," and like, "Yeah, right." So you're going to drive another ten miles, you know, to avoid using a paper bag. You know, really, I haven't not seen a big outcry since those first couple of weeks. You know, we still do litter cleanups in Mansfield and sometimes we're finding paper bags on the side of the road, which is still not a good thing, but at least we know if we didn't pick that up, you know, in a few weeks, it would be gone versus the plastic. So has not been a big impact as far as I can tell. The businesses are all still in business, all profitable. One of the issues that you can look at is so our ordinance is no plastic and the paper bags are free. And in other towns, some towns will impose a fee. So if you don't bring your own bag, you can get a paper bag, but you got to pay, you know, a nickel or a dime or something like that. And so there's different schools of thought on that. You know, one is that, you know, by having that financial penalty, you know, you're further incentivizing people to use a reusable bag. So the laws vary from town to town. There was a bill in the State House to try to have one single law for the whole state, which I support in theory. However, once the bill got into committee, I think the lobbyists got a hold of it and they watered it down to such an extent that this Mass Green Network and many other people who have fought for these local bylaws, you know, don't support the state bill. And I don't think it's going to pass this year. And one of the things that they were going to do was have the state law, you know, override more stringent local laws. So, you know, people that fought hard to get a strict bylaw in place would have it watered down by the state law. So that's kind of still pending, but it doesn't look likely that that's going to pass this year and then they'll start again next year. So that's kind of a summary. If you have specific questions, I'm happy to answer them.
I do. So when Mansfield did this, did you have to work with all the individual stores to figure out what's the best way to phase out? I mean, I'm sure they have ten thousand bags.
Yeah, there's a grace period. Typically, it's from six months to a year from when it passes to when it takes effect. I think we did it in two stages where the larger stores had a shorter time period and the smaller stores had a longer grace period. So, yeah, I mean, if you've got, you've purchased a supply of plastic bags and people are sensitive sensitive to that, that you don't want those just to go to waste, so. So there was a phase in period. The other question that comes up is who's going to enforce it, you know? In our case, it's the Board of Health. So if someone notices that a business, I mean, they go out and inspect, but if someone notices, you know, hey, I I mean, this happened to me, I was at a Chinese restaurant and they gave me, you know, my to-go stuff in the plastic bag and I was like, hmm. So, you know, they were talked to and, you know, they now comply. It's no big deal. So I hope that answers your question.
Yep.
Any other questions from the board?
Mr. Chairman, just a question, Neil, how noticeable has the improvement been since plastic bags have been stopped?
Yeah, I mean, anecdotally, you know, we just did a cleanup, actually, of volunteers. By the way, we cleaned up part of Foxborough, so maybe you can send some of that check to us. The Keep Mansfield Beautiful Group was working with the group in the Cabot Business Park two weekends ago, two weeks ago on a Friday. And we, they cleaned up from the ninety-nine restaurant, which is technically Foxborough, up to Home Depot in Mansfield and back. Collected seventy-five bags of trash, just crazy. But very few plastic bags. Definitely has gone down. And it's, you know, it's anecdotal, it's not like we're counting, but, you know, it's definitely not.
It has been noticeable.
Yeah.
Thank you very much for your presentation.
I have one little point, too. Do you have, for the recycling stream, one of the biggest offenders of sources of contamination is plastic bags. So if you have a single stream or any any recycling processor does not want plastic bags in the stream. Gets stuck in the machinery, it gums up the works, it's the biggest problem they have. So by not having those, a lot of people think they're recyclable and put them in their bin and then they cause problems. So by not having them, you're reducing your contamination rate, which may save you money in the long run because a lot of the new contracts that are coming out with the waste haulers are penalizing you if you have a high contamination rate. So. I think you have private haulers here.
We do, yeah, it's all private.
That's a big of an issue, but.
Great, thank you. Just, yeah, if you could hand that to
Yeah.
Bill and then we'll all get copies of it and.
Do that, yeah. And again, that maskgreen.org is got all the resources you need to quickly get something done.
Great.
Thank you very much for coming tonight, Neil.
Good luck.
Very much, appreciate it.
Hope to be reading about it soon.
There you go.
Well, if Leah has her way, absolutely.
Appreciate it.
I'm just following up, this is not even my personal preference.
Eight twenty, still application for a change of officer, Red Robin. Hi, good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Andrew Upton for the applicant and license fee.
So just tell us a little bit what, why you're here, what you're changing.
I come before you with the exciting news that Red Robin has hired a new president to operate in their headquarters in Greenwood Village, Colorado. This filing is required by the ABCC. There is no change to any aspect of the license premise in Foxborough or any change to any aspect of any license premise in Massachusetts or anywhere else. Just a corporate change that needs to be noted.
Okay. Any questions?
Yeah, I'm going to avoid against it.
All right. No questions.
Motion to approve Red Robin internationally, doing business as Red Robin Americas Gourmet Burger and Spirits. Application for a change of officers.
I will wholeheartedly second that.
Any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor? Thank you for coming.
All right, thank you very much.
Special town meeting warrant. Bill Keegan.
Yes, thank you.
Bill, what's his name?
What was his name? Who was that guy?
Good one, Doc.
So you have before you the most recent revisions to the warrant. The only thing that would, there are two, two things that I want you to look at tonight. One is article, it's the article pertaining to the ninety-seven A provision of the, of the police chief's authority. Turns out that both town council and labor council say that we don't need to do that. Because the authority is vested through the special act legislation, so we don't need to do that. So it's not necessary. So we.
So that's article, article?
Number nine.
That would be nine, yeah.
Number nine. Thank you. I didn't have the exact number, number in front of me. So I would respectfully ask that you withdraw that article before it gets signed tonight. It's not necessary and the authority is already stated, well stated. The second thing is with respect.
Okay.
The second is with respect to the animal control article. There was quite a bit of discussion at the advisory committee back and forth about whether they should just, it should just be the, it was actually, it wasn't, it was just a couple people having this conversation, but the issue was, should we have, should it be all five board members or should it just be sort of the town manager?
There's multiple animal controls, just so we're following, which one are you?
Article thirteen.
Okay.
Article thirteen, which is the one that talks about the hearing piece. And it's, so what the compromise position was, and I think it was Mike that recommended this and actually came up with a good idea, is the fact that we should probably, should look at the possibility of giving the board the option of appointing the town manager for that authority as opposed to just blanketing it.
It's thirteen D.
Thirteen D.
Thank you.
Okay. So that's, so that's the recommended change to that language. That seemed to be, seemed to go over. I'm not sure if it's going to change the mind of at least one member, but I think there was an appreciation for the sense that we tried to compromise the situation, to address it, so that everybody was. And I thought that your testimony the other night before the committee was actually quite helpful as well. So I, the greed I got was that I think that was, this was a good compromise.
So bottom line, it'll come, we'll decide if we want to accept it or send it off to
Right.
Town manager to.
To do the hearing.
Do the hearing.
And the example was, I thought that the chairman gave a very good synopsis of there were a couple really difficult hearings that ultimately went, that ended up being in court and required board members to testify and all that stuff. So that's the one you would probably want to hand off. But there was another one where the dog owner came before the board. My culpa, my mistake, shouldn't have happened, I accept the penalty, done. Matter's done, matter's resolved in one night.
How do we know that beforehand, though? I mean.
Well, you, what you would do, Chris, in that case is get the report from the animal control officer first. And then you could determine whether or not this is going to be a long drawn out process. Because the animal control officer will give you an indication whether or not the owner is being cooperative or not. And I think that's really the issue. And if, if there is a an attempt where there's a lot of pushback and resistance to the penalty that's being imposed, that will be made clear, I'm quite certain, before it ever reaches the board.
So just walk us through like how this would work. You would place on the agenda a discussion on Joe Smith's dog case
Yes.
pending in three weeks. Does the board want to hear it or do you want to hand it over to town manager?
Yes. So you'd have, you'd have the opportunity to interview the animal control officer to get an indication as to what her take is on the case. And then you could take a determination whether you wanted to hear it or defer to the town manager to hear.
Any other thoughts?
All right, I think the change that we hear, the initial, is appropriate. And then we could make a decision on how to handle it, whether to refer it and have a further hearing in front of the town manager or try and dispose of some hearings ourselves.
I like how it offers the flexibility. We still have the opportunity to keep it the same, but then in certain cases where it can be maybe streamlined or.
So with those two changes, what would we need to do to finalize?
The only thing, I did not take out on my own article nine because that requires the board to take that, make that action. I did take the, I did assume that you would like the new language on thirteen, so I did include it in the proposal. So the only thing that I would ask that you do is to accept the warrant as amended with with the one change that article nine be removed. And so there would effectively be twelve articles instead of thirteen.
Everybody okay with that? All right. Ed, if you want.
And those are the only, those are the only changes since the last one?
Yes.
Yes.
Do you want to read it again, Bill, and we can say?
So the motion for Ed's benefit here would be that that the board approved the warrant as amended with the following changes, that article nine be removed from the warrant and article thirteen be amended to, with the language that's presented in the document that's before you tonight.
Okay. Motion to approve warrant absent the removal of article nine and article thirteen amended as presented in the document we have reviewed tonight.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
So I, you have, you will have within your signature group tonight is a, is a is a signature page for the warrant itself to be signed. And effectively, there are now twelve articles on the warrant for consideration. And we will renumber them and present them to the finance committee tomorrow night, the advisory committee.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Police chief contract.
So the, we, last night, in executive session, the board presented you the administration and labor council presented you with the proposed contract for Chief Grace. And there were a few minor changes which we, which we made today. So the document that we have now has been so amended to include the changes as proposed by the board.
Is the one that's uploaded, is that from last night or is that with the changes?
So it looks like the changes are in it.
The one that's uploaded today has those two changes that you requested.
So I'll accept the motion to approve. I'm assuming Chief Grace.
Yes, he was fine. We met with him today as well.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to accept the contract with Police Chief Michael Grace.
Second. All righty. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Selectments update. I only have one thing. I was reminded to mention that Thursday, this Thursday at four thirty, there will be a booth ribbon cutting ceremony for the new booth playground, which was just recently renovated. Anybody else have anything they'd like to add?
Just one thing, Mr. Chairman. October has been traditionally domestic violence prevention month. And many agencies across the state are participating in that. Domestic violence causes a significant amount of deaths in Massachusetts, unfortunately. And October seventeenth is signified as a domestic violence day of remembrance. I know that Hugs Foxborough is working on being able to present a program for students here in our school system just as an update, because we find if we can get to young people at an early age when they're starting different relationships, very often it can lead to more awareness on the part of all the parties about the dangers of it. So I thought it's appropriate just to talk about it.
Well, thank you. Thank you for bringing it up. And I just want to wish Amanda best of luck. Going to be missed. I'm sure, Billy, you're going to have something to say about that, but for me, you did a great job helping keep me organized. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
And I just want to say yes to that. I mean, the other thing, the Lions Club, the event they had on the Common the weekend of the POW ceremony, they had, you know, different games and they were selling pumpkins and mums and they graciously donated the mums that are in the planters out there. And I happened to notice the exact same mums at the memorial at the Public Safety Building today, so I want to thank the Lions Club and anybody else that had. So I wanna thank the Lions Club and anybody else that had any part in donating those.
So you didn't plant those?
I planted them.
Oh, good.
I kinda suggested it'd be nice if they donated and my wife and I came up to clean them up and she happened to look over and say, there's four mums sitting there. So thanked them.
Thank you. All right, Bill.
So with that, I wanna say thank you, Chris Mitchell, for, and to Mrs. Mitchell for doing that. That always looks nice out there and I really think it's a great job and I appreciate, you do that out of the goodness of your heart and I know that's a really nice thing to do and I appreciate that. Gives, adds a real color to the front of the building, so thank you for doing that. I mean that sincerely.
Better than the planters that people were throwing trash in.
Yeah, exactly. They were meant to be, not trash receptacles, but to be real planters. And so thank you for turning that around, you know, on your own. So just another word, publicly tonight, we did the public swearing in of Chief Michael Grace and so the Grace era begins as chief of the Foxborough Police Department. So congratulations to him and his family. Look forward to working with him and with his staff and the members of the department. It's a great department. It's been built with careful guidance from two previous chiefs, Chief O'Leary and as well as Chief Baker, and now it's put into the able hands of Chief Grace. And so I wanna say congratulations to him and best of luck. I also particularly wanted to congratulate and thank Chief Baker for his work here in the town of Foxborough. He is officially retired as of October 4th, so it's just a matter of a few days from now. I wanna say that he's done a terrific job and he was hired for the reason to be a transitional chief. You know, Chief O'Leary, I know appreciates the fact that he was chief for a long time and it was time to kinda change things up a little bit. And so he did that, came in and sort of created a different approach to things, which I think is beneficial for the entire community. And I think, you know, based on a good foundation of solid people in that department, Mike Grace being one of those people that has emerged as the next leader of the organization. So I wanna say thank you. He's been a terrific asset, great guy to work with. He'll always be, continue to be a friend and a guy that I've always continued to really enjoy being with and working with. Along the same line, another guy I've always enjoyed working with, but who will be leaving us as of January 4th this year is Roger Hill. He's announced that he's gonna be retiring as of January 4th and that he is, he didn't tell me the total number of years of service, but he's been here for nine years and I won't tell you what his age is, but, you know, he's clearly a person, he's probably one of the more senior public works directors in the state. And I have to just tell you that his knowledge level is one of the best and highest I've ever dealt with in anybody in public works. And I just have really enjoyed working with him. His list of accomplishments in this community in nine years is long and extremely beneficial. And I can tell you in a short, relatively short period of time, he's done some amazing things when it comes to road conditions, the water and sewer systems. I mean, the water was literally black when he came here and he managed to fix that and right that ship. He deserved a lot of credit and I'm really grateful for the service he's provided to this community as well. So there'll be more to come on him because he's still gonna be here. He said, I told him today, he says, I still got a lot of work to do, so don't be saying goodbye as yet. And so I said, all right. So interesting enough, I received a letter this week from someone who's interested in buying the auditorium building down in back of the police department, so, which is something I didn't see coming. And, because we've talked about maybe some potential future uses of that, but there's also a lot of things associated with that building that would require, and if it were to be sold, it would have to require a public process, we'd also have to petition the legislature to do it. There's a lot of pieces to that puzzle to be fixed and rectified, but certainly might be something that would be worth at least looking at and talking to the person who's interested in looking at it. The indication is that it would be potentially a medical office type use, but not sure what the final building would look like or anything like that. So just a preliminary inquiry. And certainly if it's worthy of further, real further consideration, I would have to bring it back to this board to determine if we want to pursue it any further. But I think it's worthy of at least an initial discussion. Tomorrow, I'll be speaking at the Mass Municipal Managers Boot Camp for new managers coming into the state. My topic is budgets and developing budgets and strategic budgets. So we're gonna be talking to them, I'm gonna talk to them about 11 o'clock tomorrow morning for about an hour, and then there will be other topics such as communications, HR issues, and dealing with some of the more challenging issues that new managers have to face when they first come into work here in Massachusetts. Now, it is interesting to note that in the past two to three years, there's been 150 changes in manager positions throughout the Commonwealth. That's extraordinary. In fact, it's really challenging nowadays to find managers to even fill these slots because there's so many changes that have there just recently taken place. And then on August, October 8th, rather, I've been asked to speak at the Lieutenant Governor's Regionalization Seminar up in Worcester to talk about the regional dispatch, which is actually doing exceptionally well, and to talk about how more communities can start to regionalize certain types of services. At some point in the meeting, probably in the next month, we'll be, wanted to come back to you and I'll maybe have Rob come in and give you an update on where things are going, but it's going really, really well. We're looking to, we're gonna meet, the summer quarters meeting on Thursday this week to talk about the construction phase of the new facility and see where we are with that, but we're moving along to try and get to that, to get that process underway. And I think that's it, except for one really, really important thing, and that's to say thank you to Amanda. And I say, and I mean this sincerely, she's been a terrific, terrific asset for us. The one thing, and I said this to Mike, I said, you know, if there was any doubt as to how we, we tried a little bit of an experiment with this position and she was the first one to sort of take over this role of being the community information specialist. And if there was any doubt in my mind, she actually removed it as to how we can best do this. Because clearly it is a huge issue in cities and towns across the Commonwealth and across the country, that we need to communicate better. And I thought she has done not only a good job, but an outstanding job in trying to reach out and sort of crack that mold. And between the updates, the website, the information going out on social media, keeping the press up to date on all the issues that need to be updated on, doing press releases, getting the word out to everyone. And so I'm really indebted to you and I wish you extremely, a huge amount of success in your future. So, my welcome. Michael.
So I'll start my comments where you ended off, Bill, and that's a thank you to Amanda. She has obviously been a tremendous support and help and guide to this board, and she has that same sort of influence up in our administration office. She'll be dearly missed, but I would say she would be a fool, which I know she is not, if she did not take advantage of the tremendous career growth opportunity that has come before her. So I wish her congratulations to you and your husband, Jeremy, in this new chapter of your life.
Who also has a new job and good for him, too.
Last evening, the board started preliminary discussions on the contract renewal and/or extension for Bill, the town manager, and that will be taken up again in two weeks at your next meeting. I wanna report that our health fair was very successful, and I wanna especially thank Jim McGowan, Amanda Smith, and Christina Metcalf, who spearheaded, along with other folks, putting together that health fair and making it a success. We had over 240 employees attend the health fair and administered 137 flu shots. I wanna wish congratulations to our Water Department Superintendent, Mr. Bob Worthley. It's got to be one of the most thankless jobs, not just his job, but working in the Water Department. Nobody calls you up and thanks you when your water is good. Hey, we've got great drinking water today. It just doesn't work that way. When your water is discolored because they're flushing or when there's a pipe burst or something like that, they get the calls immediately and so do we. I wanna congratulate Mr. Bob Worthley, who's being recognized by the Mass Water Works Association, which is the professional association that covers the Commonwealth. And he's receiving this special recognition for professional merit in knowledge and contributions in the field of waterworks in the state of Massachusetts. He'll be receiving that award probably sometime in January, and I'm announcing it tonight because he is aware of that and we just, you know, wanted to capture this opportunity. We'll put messaging out. But that's a, you know, tribute to his skills, his knowledge, but also to the department that he works within. As Bill just mentioned, you know, Roger Hill, one of the finest there is. So congratulations to, you know, to Bob. With that in mind, mentioning Roger Hill retiring at the end of this year, this Thursday, I will be meeting with the Chair of the Water and Sewer Commission so that we can start looking at the succession plan and what are we gonna do to make sure that we get as fine a candidate in there as the one who is retiring. So we're starting that planning early and more to come on that. Let's see, I thought there was something else. I guess the last thing is just the, you know, congratulations, as Bill said, to Chief Baker on his retirement in a couple of days. Thank you.
Chairman, just a follow-up comment on Bob Worthley. Bob is quietly considered one of the best chemists in water experts in the Commonwealth. Most people don't realize that, but he is, we have one of the best in the state. And the fact that, you know, Bob, you don't see Bob very often because he's sort of behind the scenes mostly for the town and works really diligently to try and do the best job he can for the community, but he's very, very dedicated to what he does. And this is clearly recognition of what he really is. And I am really grateful for his work and service to the community, but I also wanna congratulate him for this accomplishment.
Thank you. All right. Motion to adjourn tonight's meeting?
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Good night, everybody.